Commissioners Board Work Session. It is Thursday, April 28th, 2022. It is 12:01 PM. Set to go until 1:00 PM. This is a hybrid meeting, Building 1, Room 280. To join, call 360-252-0000 and number 1234. This is also being livestream on our Thurston County YouTube channel. Today, we will be discussing nonprofit community and rent assistance. And this is an informational session. I am Carolina Mejia. I'm the Chair of the Board. I'm joined by Vice Chair Ty Mensah, Commissioner Gary Edwards, who will be right back, County Manager Ramiro Chavez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, as well as Tom Webster. We are joined by other staff members as well and representatives from the nonprofit sector. County Manager, with that, I'll hand it to you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair Commissioners. The purpose of this briefing, informational briefing, is just to allow the space for some of the representatives of the nonprofits to ask great questions to the Board of County Commissioners and staff. So, in this, relate to the actions the county took relating to the rental assistance and what the contracts we have with the Community Action Council. So first, I will ask Tom to walk us through the timeline of the sequence of events. And after that, really, is an open forum. So I would recommend maybe to whomever was to ask a question. We have not received any questions ahead of time, so we don't have anything in front of us to respond. And certainly, there will be space for anybody who'd like to ask questions again to the Board of County Commissioners directly or staff. And if we are in the position to answer those questions, we will do so. If not, we will follow up with additional information as needed. So we have an hour for this. This meeting needs to end by 1:00. So if there's any questions that may not be answered, I will welcome those to be submitted and we'll follow up again with those answers. And I will be, hopefully, with Madam Chair permission, will be monitoring who is up for a question. And I will help facilitate that via this Zoom screen that I have in front of me. If you feel more comfortable to put your questions on the chat, I will do that as well. So that is the premise of this conversation. Is that okay, Madam Chair?
There's not a chat option on the Zoom.
Okay, so then, raise your hand. Your virtual hand. With that, Tom?
All right. So just want to walk through a high-level timeline of kind of action. So first, I want to walk through the funding that we did provide to Community Action Councils for rent assistance from the beginning. So back in August of 2020 is when we first started receiving rental assistance under the ERAP program at that point via the state. So in August of 2020, we awarded CAC $2.9 million. And that was a sole-source contract directly with CAC to start beginning the ERAP program. Again, then in October of 2020, we gave them another $1.6 million out of CARESAC money to continue to supplement the ERAP funding. In January of 2021, there was $372,000 that was awarded in local 1406 funds. And that was really intended to bridge the funding gap between the ERAP program and the new federal rent assistance program that was coming. Then in February of 2021, we awarded another... all these were sole-source contracts. They were not competitively competed. $8.6 million for rent assistance under what was known as the T-RAP 1 contract. Also in February, we received an additional $1.4 million in ERAP funds that was awarded to CAC. In April of 2021, we received funding through the Department of Commerce and awarded another contract for $9 million for rent assistance. In September of 2021, T-RAP 2 funds arrived and we awarded a contract for $6.9 million to CAC. And then in October of 2021, we received... we ordered a contract for an additional $9.9 million. So that's... I don't have that total right here, but so a consistent amount of funding was awarded to CAC on a non-competitive basis, kind of up until October of this year. Then, in December... well, in November of this past year, the county notified CAC that we conduct subrecipient monitoring and held a kickoff meeting on November 29th of 2021 with the internal auditor. Due to kind of staff capacity in the Public Health and Social Services, we asked the internal auditor... or the county manager asked the internal auditor to assist with that monitoring. So December of 2021 is when the monitoring... the bulk of the monitoring was conducted. So the internal auditor met with CAC staff, reviewed files and financial information. Had a meeting on January 3rd with CAC to provide preliminary set of observations about the monitoring and held an exit conference to review those observations. And asked CAC to respond to those and provided their input. On January 24th, the internal auditor provided CAC with a monitoring report and requested CAC's response by February 7th. CAC requested an extension and providing that response that was granted, and CAC submitted their formal response on February 14th. On February 17th, the Thurston County Internal Audit Committee met to review CAC's response. And then on February 24th... I'm sorry, February 23rd, the Board of County Commissioners met. And at that time, voted to suspend the CAC-T-RAP contract for cause. And on the 24th, the county manager emailed CAC informing them of that suspension. At that point, the county made its first contact with Live Stories on the 25th to discuss the possibilities of entering into a contract with Live Stories. And then... So that continued. On March 2nd, the county emailed CAC to clarify that the county would reimburse CAC for staff costs related to preparation and submission of reports, preparing client files and documentation to transfer to the county, communicating with clients about canceled appointments or responding to client questions. There was a series of kind of communications in early March, including with Auditor Hall seeking to set up a meeting with CAC. That meeting did not occur. We did meet with Department of Commerce on March 9th, to which CAC was invited but was unable to attend. Earlier in the month, we had requested files, client files from CAC, and those files were eventually provided on March 23rd, 29th, and 31st. I'm trying to find my date of when we signed the contract with Live Stories. That was in mid... March 15th is when we executed the contract with Live Stories to provide rental assistance. And then between March 25th and 31st, we executed contracts with five partner agencies to provide application intake services for rent assistance. We also requested CAC repay in advance. The county provided CAC with a $2 million advance to support cash flow. We requested repayment of that advance in late March. And that advance was returned on April 14th. And so that's a high-level overview. There's some more specific dates in there if people have specific questions.
Commissioners, any initial perspectives on this?
I have one clarification issue.
I know that your Zoom screen, Madam Chair, is small, so if you're with your allowance, I can probably facilitate the questions and answer. Do you mind?
Sure. Go ahead, County Manager.
Robin, Tom, on February 23rd is the day that we suspended this contract. And it's my understanding that there is a requirement in our federal regulation that calls for that. Could you clarify that?
I would defer to the county's internal auditor for specific reference to federal code, but CFR 200 is the uniform guidance that... it's federal law that any grant recipient is required to follow. And it includes specific instructions on working with subrecipients that include suspension of contracts and reasons to do so.
Thank you. That's it for me right now.
Commissioner Mejia?
So I have a question more of, is any of the auditor staff going to be joining us?
I don't see auditor staff in this Zoom, no.
Did they get an invitation?
I am not clear about that. They did?
Yes.
Yep, so they did. Okay, so if you can raise your hand, if you have any questions, please go ahead. And I will try to facilitate that. I have Megan Sullivan. Go ahead, Megan.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to ask questions. I actually have two. And the first one is just procedural. The information that Tom shared, I'm wondering if the timeline could be shared in writing or posted somewhere, just because I want to understand.
Yeah, Megan, that was posted on the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners on April 19th. And that's available online. Thank you.
Perfect. So the question that I actually have is, this is really a public decision to move to a for-profit provider. And, you know, they have little staff and it's a software-based system. And really, the concern is that that decision was made without community input, especially from the most marginalized folks in our community. We are hearing reports from our clients that access to a computer and language barriers and not being able to speak with a human being has a profound negative impact on their ability to access the critical supports for rent. So my question is, what is the Commissioners and the county's accountability structure for this harm to clients? And how would you like us to share this impact, which we, as service providers, continue to hear about on a daily basis?
Maybe we can start with Tom in outlining some of the efforts that we're doing just to address that question.
Yeah, so thanks for that question. So a couple things. First of all, we are... we're working on the applications, clients who are in process with Community Action Council. We're prioritizing trying to serve those clients first. The Live Stories online application system, you are correct, it's an online application system. It is translated into over 50 languages. We've also... and so there's also a help desk that is available. We are partnering, as I said, with five organizations. So we do have subcontract with various partner agencies to ensure that people can access. Thurston County has also added staff within our capacity that we will support and reach out to anyone who does not have internet access or who has difficulty or is unable to submit an online application. That Thurston County will be those partners and will work with those clients to ensure that they're able to submit an application and collect their information. So we're building the capacity in order to support those to ensure that we can serve all the clients in the county. But we've, as I said, we've partnered with South Town Senior Services to work with seniors as well as CLO, Innovations for Human Trafficking, Family Support Center, Safe Place, and... am I forgetting one?
I think we're correct.
That's fine.
Thank you. Next, Derek.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the time to be able to kind of, you know, thought that this was going to be designed maybe as a listening session and a Q and A. And so I'm going to just kind of like make some statements just on my own observations. And I just kind of want to acknowledge that for over a year, the county, CAC, and CYS, we met weekly, kind of has been called to action to like bring these programs to the community and serve our community during the pandemic. We met every single week, partnered, collaborated to learn these programs together, to work on successes, work on challenges. There were guideline changes that were coming at us constantly on how to do these programs and how to implement them into the community. And we had to think on our feet while we were also in our own nonprofit organizations working through all the challenges of working through COVID. I think some of these things are kind of getting lost in translation of just kind of like the final act that occurred with Community Action Council. One of the things that, you know, we, you know, worked on is thinking about how we work through fraud, different scenarios as they come up, and put practices in place and talk about examples and talk about how we do that. So I'm just acknowledging that that partnership that we had with Tom and team was very important in putting these program services together in our community during a great time of need. I kind of... my own personal feeling is, is I understand there could be like staffing capacity, but the use of the county auditor on the audit for CAC didn't necessarily follow standard practices as I have seen them in this community. And it also didn't really honor that partnership of collaboration and communication that we were having on a weekly basis with the county already on working through challenges. We all have that relationship in place. We built trust. We built common interests in like being successful together and working through challenges together. I don't believe that CAC would have received the same response to their letter from an audit if it would have been done by Tom and team, because there was already a partnership in place to have that dialogue and conversations. I think the lack of a relationship helped to cause some of the reaction to what letter was sent back to them. That's... that was our partnership. That's how it was. That's how it was intended to be. And it was collaborative in nature. I do want to state that the response to the audit letter, in my opinion, was overkill. I think that the letter in and of itself was asking for clarification, asking for, you know, updated guidelines and information, policy, procedure work. And those were normal conversations that we were having on a regular basis with Tom and team on updated work, on how we're going to do this together and how we're going to like match this together. And so I don't... I don't know if it necessarily would have had the same conclusion, you know, following kind of like the rules that were stated earlier, the CFRs, because that wasn't the type of relationship and partnership that was going on. I also want to state that I think that how this was publicly put out there and the communication around that public information was harmful. I've not seen anything like that in my 30 years of nonprofit leadership in where an organization's audit is kind of put out to the community. I think that's a direct consequence, not only to a nonprofit organization, but I also feel like there's indirect consequences in doing something like that. We are... we are a finite bunch in our community. It's hard to get a nonprofit up and off the ground, to get them successful, to get them sustainable. And when we start to erode the public's trust of a nonprofit through actions like this, there's an indirect consequence that could hurt their donors, their partnerships, their community collaborations, their other funding sources, which are desperately needed to be able to bring into this community. I think that when we take a public stance against a nonprofit in this way, really on a subjective review of the interpretation of a letter of an audit response, we go through audits constantly. We know that audits are a way of life. I joke that we eat audits for breakfast, because we have so many audits going on all the time about everything that we have within our funding sources. And I feel like if there would have been more partnership and collaboration and questions asked about the framing of the letter, I don't think it would have reached the same conclusion, as well as if the letter was different, if this organization made a mistake and how they did this letter, would... it seemed like the county was on a path of wanting to continue to partner with them and saw them as this good-standing organization, if they would have responded to that letter differently. So that's something that I'm thinking about a lot with that. As a nonprofit organization, these kind of things scare me. I also want to like put out that the other direct consequence to this is I think now that the county is viewing this nonprofit organization, which I feel like could happy to any of us, as a high-risk organization. Contracts that they had coming to them are not being given to them. That's impacted other projects. I think Trudy's there with you. She can speak to that. And I was part of the RHC meeting last night and, you know, heard kind of like the vote around maybe the county commissioners would overrule the vote of the RHC on future programming. Again, going back to the drivers of the county auditor, if they would have looked at that response and said like, "I'm going to give that person a call, work with them, find out what's going on," they would have come to a resolution there on what the next steps were and what were the action steps CAC was going to take. I don't think we'd be in the same position of seeing that this is like such a high-risk organization. Again, my opinion. I think overall, the net impact to the community on hurting a nonprofit organization or organization like CAC is much larger than the audit findings that were within that audit and the potential of a few cases of fraud, which is really a challenge with this program. This was a fraud against CAC. So it wasn't something that they endorsed or they tried to do. This was a fraud against them, potentially. So of all the information I see now, I'm just hoping that this isn't going to be a consistent practice moving forward from the county and how they work with nonprofits, because it has been a collaborative partnership to date. This kind of thing worries me that this is like, if you disagree, if you don't like your audit results, if you speak up about something, you could be approached in this kind of way and essentially have your organization pulled out from under you and your local funding sources. I'm really hoping that there's a pathway here for some healing practices. I hope there's a pathway for, you know, CAC to become a trusted entity with the county again, so that their, you know, current contracts and future contracts aren't hurt because ultimately, they are serving a lot of people in our community, and that's very important. And so I'm just really hopeful that there are clear pathways being talked about moving forward and how we can support this organization, you know, doing what they do best and that's serving our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. I believe when in your comments, you talk about the audit process. Maybe I can give the floor either to our internal auditor or our county auditor to really outline the process and the obligation in itself of going through a formal subrecipient audit process that we went through with CAC. And it's really pretty much aligned within the contract that we signed with CAC and also aligned with the Commerce guidance from the Department of Commerce at this stage.
Thank you. Sorry, I jumped in a little late. This wasn't in my calendar, but... so I didn't hear your entire statement, Derek. But so looking at it from our perspective, we passed through, you know, millions of dollars, almost $30 million. And we are also liable to the state auditor and Commerce. And I think what happened was there was a big communication breakdown, because we literally got no cooperation. You know, I reached out to the CEO and the board, asking to meet and got a nasty gram back, a nasty letter saying, "Please communicate directly with Kirsten York." So I did. And there was no cooperation. And we reached out to Commerce as well as the state auditor, and they sent us back to CFR 200. And the remedies in CFR 200, the one that fit the situation best, was to suspend the contract. So I wasn't in that meeting, but I do support what the board did. We want cooperative partners. We want you to be as good as can be. And just when like the state auditor comes in and audits us, they give us recommendations. We take them, because they're best practices and they know this work very, very well, like the back of our hands. Now, in turn, when we pass through money to subrecipients, you know, when we go in and we find things that need to be tightened up to help prevent fraud, and there's always going to be fraud, but you tighten it up as much as you can, we expect cooperation. And, you know, in our defense, and you weren't sitting in our shoes, there was no communication. And this was a recommendation. So I'm not... you know, we really want to have a relationship with CAC, but they need to have a conversation with us, and that still has not happened yet. The first time I reached out was in February. I mean, we're almost to May. So all it was, was letters going back and forth and doodle polls that were never responded to. So, you know, we don't want you to be afraid of us, because we've worked really well together. But this is a lot of money, and we could potentially be financially liable. And there was fraud. So we're still doing our investigation. And the state auditor is also going to audit this program. So when the state auditor audits programs, we do go in ahead of time to just make sure, okay, are things tight? And they were reasonable recommendations. We didn't want them to put any more burden on the people who were receiving the money, except for the landlords. And it looks like that's where the fraud was. Unfortunately, they shut the door on communication. So I'm not sure what else the county could have done. And, you know, it's an uphill climb, I hate to say, but it's an uphill climb.
Thank you, Mary. I'm going to go next to Megan Darrell, but before we go there, Commissioner, answer a question.
I just wanted to ask Mary, Derek mentioned that the use of the county auditor in this context was... did not follow count practices that he's familiar with. And I'm just wondering, was it unusual or inappropriate for your office to be involved in this way? I'm having trouble connecting those dots.
No, absolutely not. In fact, it's in the contract twice, in two sections. So it's in the contract, Section 15, I believe. And I don't have those papers in front of me, but there are two places that it is in the contract. So I don't understand why they were surprised. I actually referenced the exact language in one of the letters that I sent.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Megan? Megan Darrell?
Thank you to Megan Darrell, Executive Director, together. First, I just had a...
Your sound is not coming clear. I don't know if you want to adjust your microphone, please.
Oh, sorry. Is that better?
A little better. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, great. First, I just had an observation about just that I think to interpret Mary Hall's interpretation of an ask from a board member to speak directly to the CEO as a nasty gram is a pretty problematic interpretation of some...
There was a lot more to the letter than that.
Mary, hold that. Go ahead, Megan.
I just think that's a problematic interpretation and may have... may have contributed to the breakdown in communication. So my question is, given the information being provided to you all as Board of Commissioners, we believe as... I believe is inaccurate and devastating and frightening decisions have been made based on some misinterpretation. How might we restore competence in CAC and constituent community and ensure you are receiving complete and accurate information in order to make your best and fully informed decisions on behalf of vulnerable clients that CAC serves?
Well, I believe within the question that I gather is perhaps the Board of County Commissioners have received erroneous information and misleading information. So I will have the board members to respond to that question directly.
I do have a question on some of this. I don't know if it's exactly from what Megan brought out, but one thing Derek mentioned was the way this went out to the public. It was my understanding that we had a Freedom of Information request from the Daily Olympian prior to any decision that we made and that they were looking to investigate a issue. I don't know what that was, but is that correct?
They were aware, they were conducting an audit on CAC, and they submitted a public records request. And by law, we needed to submit that report to them as soon as it's completed. And by law, we needed to submit that, uh, that report to them as soon as it's completed. And, and, and that is why the news release went out.
But there was never any indication by the news release that CAC had done anything wrong.
It was very clear on the news release that as evidence of potential fraudulent applications, they resulted on, on, on fraudulent payments. And there, there was never an accusation to CAC on that news release.
And uh, maybe a follow-up on that. If we end up with a finding, doesn't that lower our bond rating for when we go out and do financial business?
If, if a state auditors uh, finds a finding to the county, it has a, a, an impact on a financial ability to uh, get loans. Yes.
And then uh, maybe back to what Megan brought out. I really feel that it wasn't information that we received. It was a lack of information that we received. So we might not have had the total picture, but that wasn't uh, anybody at county level's fault. We asked for that information and didn't get it. So I just have to clarify that uh, my role here is to protect the county uh, as we move forward. So that's, I, I'm trying to, you know, obviously I'm justifying why we took the action we took, which was not a very pleasant action, I might add.
Commissioner Mejia, uh, Commissioner Messer, like to provide additional perspective on that question or moving on to the next one?
About inaccurate information? I, I don't feel that I've gotten, I haven't seen any evidence I've gotten inaccurate information. I feel like there's been problems with communication and interpretation of written communication, the things we talk about in social media and emails, having a harsher tone and audit, the, the language used in letters from auditors. It, I, I just feel like people jumped into their corners immediately and I've been feeling like if we could have sat down with, you know, face-to-face and worked through problems and that's what I've been pushing for through this entire process. I just think you get through barriers that when you're doing a war of letters, to me, it's been very frustrating. I was in the hospital for a chunk of this and I was seeing emails and Facebook wars going on and it was just incredibly frustrating. But at no point did I feel like I was given any inaccurate information by my staff. I was copied on all of the email chains or provided them after the fact. I was copied on all the letters that went from the auditor's office. If anybody sees something that is in factual error, I'd be I'd be wanting to see what, what that is and certainly that'd be important.
Commissioner Mejia?
Yes, uh, I, I also feel the same way. I don't think, um, and I really believe we have not been provided any inaccurate information by our staff. Our staff have been really clear, thorough. I stand by all of the decisions that I've taken in regards to Community Action Council. Um, I, I really stand by the information that I've been provided so far, the information that's been provided by our financial team. Uh, and it's been um, a very frustrating road. I do agree. I wish we could have met together way sooner. Um, but you know, we are kind of where we are now. With that, I, I don't have anything else to add, County Commissioner.
Next, I have Tamara Donahue. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity. Um, I want to say that some of the things that Mary Hall said today are inaccurate. And so if you haven't heard to this point that you've received inaccurate information, I'm hoping you can hear that today. And there are three, at least three points of what she said. She said there was fraud. Um, I have not heard nor seen any evidence that there was actual fraud. She said there was no communication. There has been abundance of communication from Kirsten and Community Action Council. Uh, and she said there was no cooperation. That is absolutely untrue. So I think that decisions have been made based on um, a subjective reaction and some of that reaction we're seeing here today. And if staff are giving similar information, it is inaccurate. And I think it's really important to be aware of that because it has caused significant harm to clients in our community, to the agency, to our programs, and it is absolutely a travesty and heartbreaking to see this played out this way and continuing into this meeting itself.
So thank you. Let me answer the first question that you had. Uh, we are already sending letters uh, to a specific individuals for us to recover uh, fraudulent payments. And those letters will be going out and uh, and, and the intent of those lists to recover the funds. So uh, the other two questions, I will let uh, uh, other hold to answer those questions if you feel like it.
Sorry, I'm not sure what the question is. Could you repeat the question?
Uh, if I may, the contention was that your statement that there was no communication or cooperation is inaccurate.
I feel at a disadvantage because I don't have the letters in front of me because I actually would have led, loved to have read some, some of the uh, some of them to you. Um, we requested meetings through a couple of doodle polls and we never heard back. We tried to reach out and you know, you can, I, I, I can't change your mind. Um, so I don't really know what to say unless you want to request all the documents. Um, you know, we're happy to turn them over. We still need to meet because we still need a resolution to this if we're gonna rebuild this relationship. You have to, you have to keep in mind what our role is, what my office's role is. It's to protect public funds. And we gave them recommendations, asked them for a response to each one, and we got a long letter um, telling us to put it in policy and that's, you know, if I ever did that to the state auditor, uh, it would be pretty interesting and not in a good way. So um,
Uh, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, I have Trudy in the room. Okay, Trudy?
Thanks. So I actually have two questions.
Can you, can you hear Trudy?
Can everybody hear me?
Uh, in the Zoom?
Do I need to come closer?
Come to the table, Mary.
Please come to the table.
Um, oh wait, sorry, I'm sorry. The knees. Um, I have two questions. So one, um, since this original contract was pulled, um, I understand that um, Community Action Councils also has lost at least one other contract and there's potential that other contracts are being um, not being taken away from Community Action Council. Uh, we are directly feeling the effect of that. So the CHG contract uh, has been taken away as well. And we have been working since 2018 to do a project, uh, to house three uh, young women in the North Thurston School District who haven't been able to finish their high school education uh, because they're homeless. Well, a month before we closed on the house, uh, the contract was taken, which now means that CAC doesn't have the funds they needed to continue to be in partnership with us. So Homes First now owns a home also funded by uh, the Department of Commerce that we can't put anybody in because there's no one else in the community who can actually do the case management. Community Action Council is more than a funder. Right? They provide case management. They provide partnerships with other nonprofits, so other nonprofits can also do their work better. Um, so I'm, I'm a little concerned from our perspective because now we have a home sitting empty. That's meant to have three young women in it and it's ready to go. Um, Tom was very helpful with, last week I met with him to talk about what our alternatives are and we're trying to brainstorm on what else we can do. Um, but we are concerned that other contracts are going away too and going to uh, potentially organizations that don't provide case management, which is what a lot of the people who get money also need is they need case management. I also, what was my second question now? Oh, I know what my second question was. So a couple of people have asked uh, in Zoom, what is the pathway forward to having Community Action Council back as a trusted organization in the community? And that would be very helpful to know because I know everyone here who's on this meeting wants to help get there. How do we get Community Action Council back into a trusted position with the county?
Commissioner Edwards?
Are you facilitating for the chair?
Yeah, with, with her concurrence because she doesn't have the quality.
Yeah, yeah, right. I would just like to point out to everybody here, and I mentioned, this was not an easy decision to make. And this disrupted a lot of the services that we provide. And Trudy, it sounds like you're a recipient of that disruption, if you will. But that was not the fault of county staff or the county commissioners. We had to react. We can't take a chance of ending up with a finding against us. And the lack of communication and cooperation from my roles as a lawman years ago, uh, it really almost put me into orbit. I could not believe an outfit that we were doing business with, that we were trying to get things solved, would come back. And I'm gonna say with complete disrespect for Mary Hall. She is the county auditor. She, it's up to her. It's her responsibility to keep the county out of trouble. Uh, I can go back all the way to neck, to last year in which uh, our financial uh, person, Robin, offered to, uh, help over at CAC and they denied that help. I don't know if you want to elaborate on that.
Not at this time.
But we recognized something was going on. I, we didn't know it was anything serious, but once there's fraud discovered and then we're told, well, no, we're not gonna get that information for you. It was almost like go to court and get a subpoena to obtain that information. I, I think it's gonna take a change in management at CAC uh, to build that trust that is eventually gonna be needed. We didn't like the idea that we had to cut this funding off and disrupt everyone and go find other processes uh, to carry out the mission, if you will. But it was definitely something that needed to be done. It was brought, that decision was forced upon us by the response from CAC. So if it sounds like I'm a little frustrated with this whole thing, it's exactly right. I am very frustrated. I think staff has tried to do the best job they could do under an adverse situation. I can tell you, nobody was thrilled about taking this action. So I, I just throw that out there that uh, to get to a solution, we still haven't got all the information we've been asking for. I, I don't know how long it took to get the deposit back or what was left of it, but it took well over a month. I can't even understand it. Yet today, I think it was maybe six weeks. I don't get it. I do not get, uh, and Mary has asked for contact. She hasn't had any contact yet. And being, uh, I, being told that you can only communicate with the executive director of the organization when a board actually oversees that. To me, the executive director works for the board. So I was quite disheartened about the whole thing and I'm hoping we can get there too. But I don't see us getting there until we fix the problem. Now, the problem has exasperated itself to the point we need to do a much larger audit than what would have originally been necessary. So that's kind of where I'm at. I think there's a solution, but it's not gonna get fixed overnight.
Commissioner Messer, I got Mary Hall and then I have, I believe Kirsten, do you raise your hand? Uh, Commissioner Mejia. So, uh, Commissioner Messer, agree?
I just want to address Trudy's question because to me it's been the, a really important question. I think the commissioners have been pretty well united on understanding what we had to do based on what we were finding and the communication we're getting back. We haven't been in agreement on this question of the pathway forward. Um, I, we've had many, many robust discussions about it. I'm looking every which way I can to find a pathway forward to repair the relationship. If it means a negotiated addendum to uh, the future contracts to get everybody squared away with the roles and responsibilities, I'm happy to, to, to negotiate that. My seatmates may, may not be, I don't know. We're, we're still working through that. That's an idea on the table that that I think we may still be able to use that as a pathway forward. But um, difference of opinion within the board, let me just say, um, and I really wanna, I personally just want to say that while I support the county's actions to date, I am very committed to finding a pathway forward and rebuilding trust. Because I, I know a lot of the people involved in the organization and I know that, I know this can be repaired.
Commissioner Mejia?
Yeah, um, the way I feel, I mean, for me, there's no trust on either side. So Community Action Council says they don't trust us and honestly, uh, from my standpoint, I don't trust them. And I don't trust them with future contracts right now. Um, that doesn't mean that we can't sit down and have a conversation and see if we can repair this relationship um, and see if trust can be built uh, in uh, future years to come. But at the moment, I, I feel we need to fix what is currently um, being talked about, which is kind of this whole process that led to this.
I've seen hands going up and down. So, uh, Mary, uh, do you have your hand up? And Kirsten, do you have your hand up? Mary?
So I think, you know, the first thing to help move this forward would be to respond to the report uh, in writing as the internal auditor requested. And we still have not received um, the canceled checks which we asked for. And you don't know if somebody, you know, was there a check written who cashed that check because they're not necessarily the same person or they could be different. So, so we're still waiting for that piece of information, which I know the state auditors will want to have also. And I cannot see the chat. I've heard there's stuff in the chat and I do not, I
We don't have a chat. No, we don't have that option, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Somebody said, can you see chat? And I was like, no, I can't. So, okay. And that's, that's really I wanted to say. I mean, I know CAC is a great organization and supports a lot of things. We all want the same thing. But I have a job to do, you have a job to do. So let's cooperate and make sure that um, we feel you're protecting public funds. And our internal auditors are experts in what they do. And they've been doing it for decades, just as you've been doing your job for decades. And um, I, I've heard people say that, you know, we're a little stricter than Pierce County or Lewis County. And we may be, but those counties also get audit findings. And we've had six clean audits in a row from the state auditor, six years in a row. And to elaborate on what happens to us when we get audit findings, it affects our bond rating, which makes borrowing money more expensive. It can jeopardize getting future federal grants. And we pass all of this money through to you. So help us help you. That's really what the internal audit program is about.
Kirsten?
So what I will say is I feel concerned about um, the safety of this space for me to speak out. And um, I'm gonna do my very best to speak honestly and say I believe the misrepresentation of the facts and data and information and timeline is really harmful to our organization who has provided services in this community for over fifty years. We are also independently audited on a regular basis annually by an outside independent auditor of which our organization has received upstanding audits, findings and responses for over thirty years. We are monitored by the federal government, the state government, local providers, counties across our three county area and have always collaborated in conversation and discussion about how to move forward with best practices to get the funding out to the most vulnerable clients in our community and to serve them with integrity and ethics and equity. I am disappointed to hear the county auditor expressing that we weren't communicative and that we were not responding to her requests. Um, I would highly recommend that you consider reviewing the information that we've put out that has accurately depicted the letters and emails that we've received as an organization. Um, we followed the process put out in our contract in order to discuss our concerns about the suspension. A request for meetings came after our suspension. And I want to be really clear that at that point, we had been suspended. The press release had gone out to the public, which regardless of intent, the impact was harmful to our community members and to our organization. I, I, I understand the press release went to every auditor in the entire state. And I know that our partners around the state are concerned that this would be the example of how And I know that our partners around the state are concerned that this would be the example of how a funder and a provider can work together and have issues not be resolved through monitoring processes. So there was concern about transparency, communication. I have requested meetings with the commissioners. I've requested meetings with Mary Hall. As you know, we have a meeting on the books on May 19th. So I'm happy to have those discussions with those who can attend. And I have concerns about the misrepresentation of our agency's ability to provide $25 million rental assistance to the community in the last year. And that in August, when we presented the opportunity to collaborate with a for-profit vendor, we were top three in the state. And so my concerns are, how do we get the funding out to the clients in a way that's equitable and ethical following the policies that are set by our funders? And I believe, as Derek has said, we had a collaborative working relationship to identify how we move forward on a weekly basis. And that was ultimately going really well. So I'm saddened to see the impact of this. And I am saddened to also learn that the commissioners have concerns about our ability to provide services in the future to this community. Our Penn and CHG contracts are up for renewal and I understand you'll be discussing that. Ultimately, I hope that you provide that funding to providers who can get the funding to the clients that deserve it and are eligible for it and that the harm done in the transition time through this has been highly impactful. We are open to having discussions about how to repair our relationships with the county and hope that you can come to that place yourselves. And I just appreciate our team who has weathered a pandemic and served thousands and thousands of clients. You have received all the information. You have our financial statements. You have our canceled checks. You have every single client file. You have every single document that we provided, every fiscal document we provided. So I'm, I'm just concerned and confused as to why it would continue to be a narrative that we're not complying. And so I just need to be able to show up here and say that is really hard to hear and it's very harmful to me and it's harmful to our team and it's harmful to our community.
Thank you. I know that I have a couple of hands up, Megan Sullivan and Megan Darrow. But I'd like to provide a space for any others before I get to you, Meggans. Anybody else who has a specific question who have not asked yet? We only have six more minutes. Megan Sullivan. And Megan Darrow, are you still your hand up or you forgot to take it down? You still have additional questions? Okay, go ahead. Considering that we have only six more minutes, so go ahead, Megan.
I'll attempt to be brief. I just wanted to mark concern about a statement Commissioner Edwards made about what it would take to, you know, restore good working relations between the county and the CAC would be a change in executive leadership. And I guess the question that I have about that is sort of rhetorical and it's an invitation and request for all involved on the county end to consider where unexamined biases about Kirsten personally as a woman of color leading in our community through a pandemic might have gotten in the way and what work folks could do to examine what potentially are unexamined biases. Because what it could look like to the community and what it looks like to me is that there was a lot of weight put on what Kirsten said and how she said it when she asked for clarification and guidance about conflicting information. And Derek alluded to this, that he's not seen things be handled in that particular way. And based on the collaborative nature of the relationship historically, that seemed disproportionate and pretty concerning. So my invitation or request is for folks to look at how there might be biases at play and Kirsten may be personally being targeted when Kirsten was just seeking clarification and has always been seeking to serve her clients. Thanks.
Megan, Darrow.
Yeah, Megan, you addressed one thing I wanted to address, but I just wanted to go back to some of what Commissioner Edwards and Mary Hall were saying. That what I'm hearing, and I just want to make sure I'm hearing this correctly, that there was communication from Community Action Council. But it was that you didn't like the way that they were communicating and that you felt it was disrespectful. I also heard from Commissioner Edwards that that timeline started as far back as a year ago with a way that CAC communicated or didn't allow, didn't allow some inquiry a year ago. Commissioner Edwards, I just wanted to see if that was correct.
Did you get that question? I really don't know what the question. Could you restate that, Megan, please?
Yeah, I was just asking for you to confirm that you said that your concerns and suspicion of fraud started actually a year ago and not based on the timeline that Tom presented.
No, I didn't have any indication there were any problems anywhere along until this was brought to our attention.
I think in going back that we can see that we did state that. Just, I was just asking for clarification. My one last question is actually around Tom's timeline. I heard in the timeline that February 25th was the first contact with Live Stories. I believe that that's inaccurate. I know that there were conversations about Live Stories that happened prior to that and possible exploration by the county to partner with them prior to that. Can you, can somebody address that from the staff? When did conversations with Live Stories or, or any exploration and partnership actually happen with Live Stories?
I can answer that from my perspective. And the timeline that Tom stated is at least the first time that I got engaged with Live Stories. Megan, if you have any indication that previous conversations have occurred, I would love to hear that specifically as to where you're coming from.
Yeah, from other nonprofit providers in the community and also some county staff that I don't feel safe sharing their names here. That Live Stories was engaged and talked to prior to this. I don't know if it was expert around partnership or what. I just know that Live Stories was brought to our community as a possible partner. I was just wondering.
So just to clarify and elaborate on that, the partnership with Live Stories was out of necessity after the contract was suspended to CAC. And again, Megan, making those broad statements, I appreciate that you feel comfortable stating on this. But if you have specific information for me to look at, if any prior conversations with Live Stories that were exploring any partnerships, please send those to me. Please send any information that you have to corroborate your statements. I will appreciate that.
The only thing I would add is in trying to, the email to Live Stories on the 25th was the first time I reached out to Live Stories around contracting because I was not, didn't have that as something that we were going to need to do at all. And so Live Stories does contract with the Department of Commerce to do data reporting. And so it is possible that there had been some communication via the Department of Commerce with our partners, with CYS, around making sure Live Stories had created a reporting format for the Department of Commerce that we were required to use. So I don't know if there was some communication that perhaps be misconstrued around how we were reporting the Department of Commerce that involved Live Stories. But there was no discussion prior to the 24th, prior to the board's decision around engaging the county directly contracting with Live Stories to provide rent assistance.
Excuse me, County Manager, I would like to address the comment that was made by Megan Sullivan and about biases from the board.
Go ahead, Madam Chair.
So I find your comment really harmful and damaging, Megan. Not only to me, but also as well to staff. As a woman of color in leadership, currently the only woman of color in the whole state to be serving in a commission across the state, it is extremely damaging to bring that up because that's not the case. We never wanted to get to this point where we are. I can, I can honestly say that. We were wanting a solution out of this. But there has been a breakdown in communication. For me, it's been very harmful to see staff being thrown under the bus over and over again. And it's been extremely frustrating.
Thank you. I think we're over time, Madam Chair. If you'd like to, the commissioners like to make final statements before we, Madam Chair calls the meeting?
You know, I would like to say one thing and that is I'd like to ask Mary Hall if in fact, we've got all the information that we've asked for at this point. I, it was my understanding, we still did not have all the information we need. So Mary, what's the deal?
Yeah, that's correct. We need the fronts and the backs of the checks because we need to see who endorsed them. So that's what I'm talking about when I say canceled checks. And the bank should have all of those electronically. You know, and I'm very disappointed with this meeting. Just want to share from my perspective because number one, I give money to a lot of you. And we all want the same thing. We all want to help people in the community. And, you know, we were, we were putting together a little presentation to talk about this is why and how we audit, that we are going to invite you all to. I hope you'll still come. I think it's, it's not going to serve anybody well if you think that, that we're the enemy or the bad guy or that we maliciously set out to hurt CAC because there's nothing further from the truth. I have, this is the first time I've seen Kirsten York and this is the first conversation I've had with her also. And that's not without trying. So, you know, my, my cell phone number is at the bottom of every single one of the emails that I send out. So you know, I hope time heals all wounds, but we're not the bad guy here. And that's, I guess that's all I want to say. And and Kirsten, feel free to call me if you and I just want to talk. This was a very awkward meeting and environment. And I didn't receive the invitation until today. So I'm sorry I was late.
My apologies. Good day, Commissioner Mary. Madam Chair, back to you.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.